Fourteenth.
According to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, will be going into executive session, and I do need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We'll vote on that, Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. That's three votes in the majority. We will adjourn to the executive session and return at 6:00 PM. Not 6:30, but 6:00 PM. Thank you very much. We'll see you at 6:00.
The call to order, the Select Board meeting of August fourteenth. It's an open meeting, it's in room three oh four. We may have a, we may have on Zoom with a one member, if we do, we will vote individually. And it'll be remote, so we will wait to see if we have that fifth member. As of now, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we honor our veterans, both past and present. Thank you very much. Recorded?
Don't forget to man out shit.
I also want to add to the announcement, thanks to my colleague, Mr. McDonald, who's my eyes and ears, the announcement, this meeting is being recorded. And we, as of now, we have four members present. Okay, the warrant has been signed, and we move on to appointments, of which...
There are none.
There are none.
Nice.
Okay, does that mean that...
New business.
New business, okay. Mr. McDonald, Mr. McGinnis moving right along.
Olive Garden change of manager request.
Ah, here he is.
Any appetites, Forrest, before you begin? Not tonight.
You can leave now.
I'll bring Brinesup next time.
Next time, okay. Do yourself and tell us what's going on.
So, my name is David Marshall, I'm now the new general manager for this location here in the North Dartmouth location. So, I've been with the company for seventeen years, and now I previously, before this, took over the Hyannis location. And now, they just kind of moved me around, so now I'm here now.
You do a heck of a job. You guys do one heck of a job, really.
How's business?
Lot busier here than in Hyannis, so...
Glad to hear it. Welcome to Dartmouth.
So, in the rankings, are they in this area number one?
So, we're in competition with three, at least we're the busiest in Massachusetts.
Good for you guys.
You're number one by far.
Good for you, that's great.
Yeah, the next one would be in our little region, would be Warwick, Rhode Island, and then West Hartford, Connecticut.
Inside information.
Motion for the change of manager request.
Second that.
Second, any discussion on the motion? Mr. Gracie is not on Zoom, so we're gonna vote, we can vote once. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much for coming in, and good luck in the place.
We'll do. Yeah, I live in South New Bedford right now, but on West Beach.
That Cape Cod Canal Bridge doing.
Oh yeah, that was tough for a while, but nope, absolutely.
Thank you very much for coming in, good luck to you. Okay, Charles Christie Bridge dedication ceremony.
Yes, the chief was going to be here.
Is he out there? He was here.
You want me to get him?
Shall we go on, go on after order?
Don't get lost, Mr. Mickelson.
Send the dogs out.
Maybe you should get lost.
Hold on for a second out there, we're gonna be a couple minutes looking for the chief.
Yeah.
You know, I would think they would be busy.
I think they're steady, I don't think they're killing it like around here, it's funny.
But that kind of shocked me to me.
The chief left.
Italian lobster, that I would think people would go for.
I can hear Stanley from here, he's just like in the...
I'll just read his letter if he's not here.
Yeah.
I remember, like, why would they want a red lobster in Cape Cod?
Well, same thing, we had a red lobster here, and I'm trying to think, it could have been where Olive Garden is.
Talk some more to Sal, please.
It didn't last.
Yeah.
That was, that was where...
I'm trying to think. Not where Olive Garden is.
No. No, the red lobster used to be over where the Brazilian grill was.
Brazilian Grill.
Yeah, frozen fish in it.
And then it went from the red lobster to Smokey Bones, and into something else, and then now it's the Brazilian grill.
Yeah, that's right.
Stanley?
I liked Smokey Bones.
We'll read from the letter, thank you.
Well, we'll just read it from the letter.
Okay, thanks for trying, Mr. Mickelson, and glad you came back. Okay, this is a letter from Chief Leveque, he addressed it August fourth to the Select Board, and I will read it in his absence. Good morning, Mr. McGinnis. I'd like to invite you and the members of the Select Board to our rededication ceremony on Friday, August eighteenth. Two oh two three, we will be rededicating the Reed Road overpass to one ninety-five to fallen Officer Charles Christie. Mass DOT has erected the newly designed memorial signs, and will place one each on each side of the overpass. Please let me know if you or any of the Select Board would like to say a few words at the ceremony, thank you. Once again, the date of the ceremony is August eighteenth, this Friday at ten a.m., the grass area on Reed Road just before the bridge, according to our expert of Reed Road, Mr. McDonald. Any questions or comments from anyone? Nope, we don't, we've...
No vote, we're just trying to get the word out.
Okay, right, so once again, August eighteenth, this Friday, ten a.m., rededication of the bridge which overpasses on Reed Road over Route one ninety-five. I will try to make it there myself, but the comments will leave to the, to the chief and his officers, but we'll be there.
I'll try to make it myself.
Okay. Any comments from anybody? Okay, move on from that. Okay, thank you. Mr. McGinnis, next Select Board additional meeting.
Yes, so in looking at the projected agendas, the next Select Board meeting is August twenty-eighth, and then following that is September eleventh. There's a number of things on the agenda for the twenty-eighth and the eleventh, but also, we're, we're starting to get ready for a town meeting, which is in October, and generally, we have to present the warrant to the Select Board and have them vote on it, and it might, otherwise, the September eleventh meeting, the next meeting after that that's on the schedule is October second, and that would not give us enough time, and we won't have the warrant completely ready for the board to vote on the eleventh, so the eighteenth, if the board can fit that in, might be a good meeting.
I think originally, our hesitation would be back-to-back with the eleventh, but at this point, we've had back-to-back meetings, and there's plenty to do. Any comments from anybody in favor or not in favor? Do we need to vote on that?
Yes. Because you voted on the dates, yeah.
Very good, do we have a motion?
Motion to add September eighteenth as an additional Select Board meeting.
Second that. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Gracie is not present, so we can vote, all in, all in favor of the...
Aye.
Opposed, none. We will add September eighteenth, time to be determined, to the schedule. Thank you very much, I think it's a great idea. Employee Appreciation Committee newsletter, Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, I just wanted to, the Select Board's heard about the Dartmouth Employee Appreciation Committee in the past, I just wanted to give an update on some of the, you know, great work that they do, on a volunteer effort. They've now created a newsletter that they distribute to staff, they're trying to organize events and recognize staff. You can see, one of the things they've added is a monthly shout-out, and that is an opportunity for existing staff to identify other staff that are going above and beyond. And you can see in the shout-outs for March, April, and May, they have awarded...
I have the call to order, the Select Board meeting of August fourteenth. It's an open meeting, it's in room three oh four. We may have a, we may have on Zoom with a one member, if we do, we will vote individually. And it'll be remote, so we will wait to see if we have that fifth member. As of now, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we honor our veterans, both past and present. Thank you very much. Recorded?
Don't forget to man out it.
I also want to add to the announcement, thanks to my colleague, Mr. McDonald, who's my eyes and ears, the announcement, this meeting is being recorded. And we, as of now, have four members present. Okay, the warrant has been signed, and we move on to appointments, of which...
There are none.
There are none.
There are none.
Nice.
Okay, does that mean that...
New business.
New business, okay. Mr. McDonald, Mr. McGinnis moving right along.
Olive Garden change of manager request.
Ah.
Here he is.
Any appetizers for us before you begin? Not tonight.
You can leave now.
I'll bring Brian Stups next time.
Please introduce yourself and tell us what's going on.
So, my name is David Marshall, I'm now the new general manager for this location here in the North Dartmouth location. So, I've been with the company for seventeen years, and now I previously, before this, took over the Hyannis location. And now, they just kind of moved me around, so now I'm here now.
You do a heck of a job. You guys do one heck of a job, really.
How's business?
Lot busier here than at Hyannis, so...
Glad to hear it. Welcome to Dartmouth.
So, in the rankings, are they in this area number one?
So, we're in competition with three, at least we're the busiest in Massachusetts.
Good for you guys.
We'd be number one by far.
Yeah, so...
Good for you, that's great.
Yeah, the next one would be, in our little region, would be Warwick, Rhode Island, and then West Hartford, Connecticut.
Inside information.
Motion for the change of manager request.
Second that.
Second, any discussion on the motion? Mr. Gracie is not on Zoom, so we're gonna vote, we can vote once. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, thank you very much for coming in, and good luck up there.
Absolutely.
We've got a shorter commute now.
Will do, yeah, I live in South New Bedford right now, but on West Beach, so...
That Cape Cod Canal Bridge doing.
Oh, yeah, that was tough for a while, but nope, absolutely.
Thank you very much for coming in, good luck to you. Okay, Charles Christie Bridge dedication ceremony.
Uh, yes, the chief was going to be here.
Is he out there? He was here. Can we...
You want me to get him?
Shall we go on, go on and order?
Don't get lost, Mr. Mickelson.
Send the dogs out.
Maybe you should get lost.
Hold on for a second out there, we're gonna be a couple minutes looking for the chief.
Yeah.
You know, I would think they would be busy.
Yeah, she says it's steady, I think they're steady, I don't think they're killing it like around here, it's funny.
The chief left.
I can hear Stanley from here, he's just like in the...
I'll just read his letter if he's not here.
Yeah.
Well, same thing, we had a red lobster here, and I'm trying to think, it could've been where Olive Garden is.
Talk some Mike Salves, please.
It didn't last.
Yeah.
That was, that was where...
I'm trying to think.
No.
Not where Olive Garden is?
No, no, the red lobster used to be over where the Brazilian grill was.
Brazilian grill, that's...
Yeah, frozen fish in it.
And then it went from the red lobster to Smokey Bones, and into something else, and then now it's the Brazilian grill.
Yeah, that's right.
Stanley?
I liked Smokey Bones.
We'll read from the letter, thank you.
Well, we'll just read it from the letter.
Okay, thanks for trying, Mr. Mickelson, and glad you came back.
For a minute, just tell them.
Okay, this is a letter from Chief Leveque, he addressed it August fourth to the Select Board, and I will read it in his absence. Good morning, Mr. McGinnis. I'd like to invite you and the members of the Select Board to our rededication ceremony on Friday, August eighteen. Two oh two three, we will be rededicating the Reed Road overpass to one ninety-five to fallen Officer Charles Christie. Mass DOT has erected the newly designed memorial signs, and will place one each on each side of the overpass. Please let me know if you or any of the Select Board would like to say a few words at the ceremony, thank you. Once again, the date of the ceremony is August eighteen, this Friday at ten a.m., the grass area on Reed Road, just before the bridge, according to our expert of Reed Road, Mr. McDonald. Any questions or comments from anyone? Nope. We do, we've...
No vote, please be taken, we're just trying to get the word out.
Okay, right, so once again, August eighteenth, this Friday, ten a.m., the rededication of the bridge, which overpasses on Reed Road over Route one ninety-five. I will try to make it there myself, but the comments will leave to the, to the chief and his officers, but will be there.
I'll try to make it myself.
Okay. Any comments from anybody? Okay, move on from that. Okay, thank you. Mr. McGinnis, next Select Board additional meeting.
Uh, yes, so in looking at the projected agendas, the next Select Board meeting is August twenty-eighth, and then following that is September eleventh. There's a number of things on the agenda for the twenty-eighth and the eleventh, but also, we're, we're starting to get ready for a town meeting, which is in October, and generally, we have to present the warrant to the Select Board and have them vote on it, and it might, otherwise, the September eleventh meeting, the next meeting after that that's on the schedule is October second, and that would not give us enough time, and we won't have the warrant completely ready for the board to vote on the eleventh, so the eighteenth, if the board can fit that in, might be a good meeting.
I think originally, our hesitation would be back-to-back with the eleventh, but at this point, we've had back-to-back meetings, and there's plenty to do. Any comments from anybody in favor or not in favor? Do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Cause you voted on the dates, yeah.
Very good, do we have a motion?
Motion to add September eighteenth as an additional Select Board meeting.
Second that. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Gracie's not present, so we can vote, all in, all in favor of the...
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. We will add September eighteenth, time to be determined, to the schedule. Thank you very much, I think it's a great idea. Employee Appreciation Committee newsletter, Mr. McGinnis.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to, the Select Board's heard about the employee, Dartmouth Employee Appreciation Committee in the past, I just wanted to give an update on some of the, you know, great work that they do, on a volunteer effort. They've now created a newsletter that they distribute to staff, they're trying to organize events and recognize staff. You can see, one of the things they've added is a monthly shout-out, and that is an opportunity for existing staff to identify other staff that are going above and beyond. And you can see in the shout-outs for March, April, and May, they have awarded shout-outs, but then they also, in the monthly shout-outs, they talk about who was nominated to be recognized. So, I think it's great for morale, this Employee Appreciation Committee has, has really done an excellent job, they've coordinated some ice cream socials here in town, they have a summer event on the twenty-fourth at the concert down in, upon a Genset landing, so I just wanted the board to be aware and recognize them for their hard work and dedication. The members of the committee are Donna Fernandez, Cheryl Abrahtes, Becky Amroth, Mike Moniz, Melanie Perry, Denise Bozing, Sue Gonsovs, and Dolores Joseph, so just wanted to make that, make the board aware of what they're doing, that's great.
Clarification, it's on the twenty-third, it'll be held during the Wednesday night concert, is that...
Correct.
Oh, so, is there a timeframe for that, or before, or after, or during?
It is, usually starts just before, and then the staff can stay for the concert.
So, do we know the time that would be?
The concert starts at six.
Yes.
Six thirty, typically six thirty.
I can see a time on here.
Six thirty, eight thirty usually.
I can find out, I want to say it's five thirty, but I will, I can get you that information. Oh, four o'clock for the employees.
Four o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any question on that, anybody have any other comments? Great idea, a great committee there to make this thing happen.
Yeah, the events they've been organizing have been growing in attendance, which is great, so we, and it includes staff throughout town, I mean, the police, schools, DPW, everybody's invited.
Library, nice.
In the libraries, yes, everyone.
Okay, we can move on from that?
There we can.
This is a heavy-duty agenda, you're doing okay so far?
Okay, yeah.
Great. Town administrators' update.
Do you want to do old business?
Sequence, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, I missed that, my mistake.
More than happy to do that, if you prefer, but...
No. As I mentioned, we are working internally on preparing for fall town meeting, it's hard to believe, but we, it feels like we just had spring town meeting, but fall town meeting's coming up in October. The Long Range Capital Planning Committee met last week, it was a very productive meeting, and I think everyone involved is committed to evaluating the town's long-term needs and goals, and discussing ways that those, they can be financed over time. I'm reviewing the ARPA funding projects with the Finance Committee next week on the twenty-fourth, and I'll be back before the board, this board, on the eleventh to discuss again, to see if the board wants to move forward with any decisions. On a positive note, very positive, beach sticker numbers for the year, the town sold forty-five hundred beach stickers this year. Of that, three thousand four hundred eleven were sold online, that's seventy-six percent of the stickers sold this year were online. And then, three hundred sixty-two were mail-in, that's eight percent, and then we had seven hundred twenty-eight walk-ins, that was about sixteen percent. So, it was great that we were able to do a lot of that online this year, we're trying to provide more options to the people in the future, but it was very successful, the town sold a lot of stickers, the beach has been well-attended, so it's, it's nice.
The weather's cooperated also, but there's a lot of chatter still about the seniors and the, and the difficulty to get the beach sticker.
Right.
So, we need to satisfy those seven hundred and forty-eight walk-ins.
I think we're put in the category of the amusement fair for next year, and stickers for next year, we have to revisit that and make sure we do it the right way.
Yeah, I mean, we have to be concerned about that.
Yep, so we're working on that.
We don't want to hear that chatter.
I agree, so, and that's all I have.
While we're on parks, was Parks and Rec able to get somebody to run the beach rig?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
We hired someone, I think, last week?
I think last Sunday, and it looked pretty good.
I saw the, I saw pictures, I, the only, I figured they did, because I saw pictures of the beach being rigged.
And that's quite, that's quite a rig.
Yes.
Yeah.
To operate that, you know, it's not that easy, you really have to know what you're doing.
Was, was the issue, they needed someone that, with that specialized license.
Yeah, it's really important, otherwise they're making...
I applied for the job, because I have an electronic lawnmower, but I...
Glad you're still here, Dave.
A little bit.
Your, Mr. McGinnis, in your discussions with your, when you meet with Superintendent Lancaster from Parks and Rec, can you talk to him about putting in some kind of a capital project plan for the road at Round Hill? Because there is an area of the road that floods out, even in the smallest of monorain. If somebody can take a look at it.
We do actually, so we had a capital item last year that was, so we have the funding, it's just we're working on the design with DPW to upgrade the road, so we couldn't do it over the summer, we hope to have it completed by...
No, in summertime, it's not the time to do it.
Yeah, for sure.
Not like EverSource.
There's enough, we have, we have enough, we have enough bad things going on in social media, that's the last thing we need, is we closed down the beach because we're repairing the road. It's a long walk, are you kidding me?
All right, all right, we won't do it.
It's easy going down, coming back up is tough.
Good point. All set, Mr. McGinnis?
Uh, yes.
Okay, we're going to old business?
Old business, Bliss Corner, no new updates, Lake Donkeychoke, no new updates, Municipal Broadband, we're working on finalizing the contract with the vendor, we have a meeting tomorrow. I hope they have that finalized, and Mass Beat Title Five Amendments, nothing new since they made their announcement about a month or so ago, two months ago.
Okay, we have minutes to approve, June fifth and July tenth. Do we have any comments, questions, or revisions?
Review, everything looks fine, so I make a motion that we approve both the minutes of...
Second.
July, sorry, of June fifth and July tenth, thank you.
Any, second?
Second, yep.
Any comments or questions? Let's vote, all in favor approving that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, thank you very much. Select Board updates.
Do you have anything?
No, I think he has something.
I, well, I can go second.
You're getting there.
I do have one, yeah? Go ahead, go.
Well, I'll just say, and everyone knows I'm the sign guy, and I have a new assistant, this is my, Heidi Brooks is my new assistant.
I'm a bit impressed by my colleague, Mr. Mickelson's work on the signs, and I have to say, in the Dartmouth Street area, there were a lot of signs, and when he made that last plea to the public to get rid of them, people not to do it, they started to disappear. There was one sign left that was on a telephone pole that was about seventy-five feet up, so I consulted my friend over at Bristol Aggie, and I got one of those, the things, you shimmy up the rolls, and I got the sign down.
Great.
And nobody got hurt.
Yeah, don't show that, we don't want to give you any business.
Well, if you see this sign out there...
Rip it off.
Get rid of it, here you go, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Mickelson.
So, I must say, I want to thank the people that are cooperating, honestly, on my way home from work this afternoon, I obviously come down Route six from Fall River, but, and it was clean. There were, there were a few over the weekend for the tax-exempt day, and they were right near the mall, not a lot of them, but they were on our property, and I, I was gonna get out, I was driving to work Saturday, early, it was six thirty in the morning, I was gonna take them out, but I said, you know what, I'll give them an extra day, they're gone. They took them out themselves, thank you very much, I won't mention the, the company's names, but that's, that was nice of you, and, and, and in a positive, positive way. If you want to do something like that for a weekend, and you put it in and take it out, I don't have a problem with that, but to, to abuse your, your, the, the town's property with signs like this, or the power washing signs that are all over private property, like the mall and parts like that, and Home Despot and places like that, we don't have any, we have no jurisdiction.
They probably don't even know they're up.
They don't know, because they don't pay attention, they don't clean their own lots. But anyway, so, it's not Home Despot's fault, but it is Home Despot's fault, they should tell the people not to do it. But I want to thank everybody again for paying attention to our bylaw, signed bylaw, thank you.
Thank you, I have one other additional comment quickly, but I think it's worth, we, we did hold the, the long-term planning meeting last week, and members, volunteer members, Bruce Brooks from the Capital Planning Committee, Rob Almy from DPW, Terry Ham from Finance, myself there representing the board, and three studebust staff members, Gary Carrero, Director of Finance, Sean was there, and Jim Kylie from Schools. And the first meeting was productive, it was really, really well-covered by the Fifth Estate, Fifth Estate, Sean?
Fourth Estate.
Fourth Estate. Maggie at Dartmouth Week, thank you, really inaccurate portrayal, there were a lot of things mentioned there, and about schools and all kinds of stuff, and bear with us as we go forward, because our job's gonna be to sort it out, prioritize it, and then help try to find ways to pay for it. But there's a lot of chatter and talk, because we're trying to plan that out, and we don't want people to start thinking the bulldozers are gonna show up at the middle school to start building the school next week. It's all about planning. We already have the meeting planned for September, and we also have a meeting planned for October about the whole schools and their history, and what's going forward. So, I really, it's a great group, great perspective, and very well-qualified, and we plan to call on other people from other parts of the town, and boards and committees to, to, to help us out, sort this thing out, and I appreciate all the efforts we've done there, and as we go forward, we hope to have more and more public show up, because there'll be more pertinent issues with very specific agendas, and we'll let you know, and we'll put it out there, and if we can fill up the, the middle school auditorium, fantastic, because this is really important, everywhere from our sewer treatment plants, to the age of our schools, and everything in between. So, thank you for everybody, and it worked out great. I'm done.
Good.
Anybody else? Mrs. Brooks, you have to have, say something.
I have to say something.
We're not leaving without you saying something.
Time is of the essence.
Okay, I just wanted to say that last week, I, I went on the DPW tour last Wednesday, and I know that you're attending, Mr. Tattlebaum, this week, very informative, so many things that I did not know that happened, and I did speak with Mike, who gave us the tour, who he'll be meeting with, and I'll be talking to Peter Chase about doing some PSAs about things that should be flushed and things that should not be flushed, because things that should not be flushed are prematurely aging our system, and costing us a lot of money, and we'll talk more after you go on your tour.
Right, and the other thing is about the water quality issue, we're meeting on that, and month September, we're gonna really be hitting that hard regarding composting and water quality and all that kind of stuff, and I think we committed to that over the last sixty days, and we're not gonna give up, we're gonna stick with it and get it done. Mr. McDonald, anything to say?
Yeah, actually, this weekend, Freetown Lakeville, actually called Free Lake, the softball organization there held the tournament, with the tournament, there were communities from Gloucester and Freetown, Dartmouth sent two, their two U-12 teams, their gold and green teams, and just to, it was a good tournament, held well, the weather held out well, but the best part is, is that both Dartmouth teams ended up in the championship, and the Dartmouth green team and the Dartmouth gold team, both U-12s, gold beat the green, the younger squad beat the older squad, from what I was told, I was there, so congratulations to the young ladies and their coaches of U-12.
Were they, but not chosen one?
Oh, I know, I was there, but I was, I was told that the difference in both teams is, there's a younger team, which is the gold team, and the older team, even though they're the same age, roughly the same ages, they're eleven, twelve, and tens and whatnot, so congratulations to both, to both teams on, on, on an excellent tournament, but specifically congratulations to the Dartmouth gold teams, and of course, my granddaughter, Benner, who plays on there, so...
This is good news for Coach Arguin at the high school, they're coming, hang on, Beth.
I'm basically saying, the future is definitely bright for Dartmouth High School softball.
Mike Watson's daughter won the Most Valuable Player.
Yes, my, and, and former selectman Watson is part of the same team that my granddaughter is on, and both of them...
Probably better athlete than her father, obviously.
Yes, well, the father did have some good displays on catching foul balls, once, but he failed to, he failed to dive into the woods several times.
He does a better job as superintendent.
Yeah, yeah, so, they've, they've done very well, so congratulations to all, to them both, and specifically, congratulations to D-GAL, they run a fantastic program, and for the parents out there, D-GAL is doing a sign-ups for field hockey, as a matter of fact, they're out there now, so, and of course, fall ball's coming up shortly, and then there's D-GAL basketball sometime shortly thereafter, so...
We'd be remiss not mentioning the steel tournament, which just took place...
And the steel, right, I, yeah, the steel tournament, the DYA, the steel tournament is just absolutely a fantastic tournament, no matter what, all through the years, it's just, they do a great job, they have, it's well-attended, in fact, to the point where it's just an absolute craziness for everybody, but the volunteers from the DYA, they do a fantastic job for that too, but, you know, but then again, any organization in this town, D-GAL, DYFL, DYAA, D-LAX, all those teams, Burgo Basketball, all of them do a fantastic job, and if it's not, if it wasn't for them, these kids wouldn't have an outlet, because the town doesn't do anything for them, and it's, and it's a damn shame, but
That's another topic.
That's another topic for a discussion, but for those organizations, you have our utmost respect.
Amen to that. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Wow.
We gotta get somebody out of here, before, before somebody else gets really upset.
Most of adjourn, we have a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you very much. Congratulations.